Supervisors, the regular open session meeting is scheduled to begin at 7:00 this evening in the community of Woodlake. But currently, the board supervisors, it is 3:00 PM and we are going to convene in a closed session. Counsel, do we have need for this session?
Yes, we do. Item A is off calendar. Items B through G will be heard, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Okay, at this point in time, the board will adjourn to closed session. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the evening meeting of the Atlantic County Board of Supervisors. This is the fourth of our evening meeting series. Very excited to be here in Woodlake and excited to see such a big crowd, but it's nice when the council chambers are so small, makes the crowd look even bigger. With that, we will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. That will be drawn by a moment of silence. Please keep all of the victims, the residents in the areas affected by the hurricanes in your mind as we adjourn. We will be led today by Supervisor District 4, Mr. Worthley. Join me, Mr. Lee, on our flag. Ready, salute.
Our good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will take up item number one. Counsel, do you have anything to report on our closed session?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two. We'll begin with board supervisor matters, and since we're in District 4, I will begin with Supervisor Ennis.
Kind of sneaky, but I'm familiar with it. Well, a big event in my district is the pier fire, but I'm not going to elaborate much on it because our illustrious chief Charlie Norman is here, and he'll be talking about that in a little bit. I'm going to try to make an appointment and go out and tour the South County Gale Facility again. Darren Johns, who's one of the super geniuses out there, and he tells me that they've got some of the cells in place and even some of the bunks. So I'm thinking maybe I can go out there, think about maybe taking Supervisor Crocker with me, and maybe we could take a picture in there running this bump.
It might hold me over.
Yeah, but kind of looking forward to that. That's all I have for this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Worthley.
Well, I guess true. Last week was kind of a busy week, you know, the short one for a holiday. We had our, the CSAC Board of Directive meeting in Sacramento, which I attended. Much energy still trying to present the passage of S.B. 45, which would be a three-handers to our colleagues, and we deal so much with providing services to our folks in Tulare County. And it's a very interesting situation, dynamic, because apparently many of the members didn't want to have to go on record in voting one way or the other for argument of their self-position of opposing the public union, but at the same time realizing that these nonprofits in all the counties of the state, site of San Francisco, are in opposition with us. So anyway, that was a big portion of it. And we're just grateful that the fires to South County has not taken and destroyed too many properties as far as homes and so forth. So that's really good news, and we're grateful for that. So I have to say thanks.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, it's been a couple of weeks since we've met, and just a few highlights of some of the things. Last week, I was able to have the opportunity to go out with our Resource Management Agency Director, Reed Shanky, and we were able to see the county's chip seal program out in District 1 and the road crews. And that is, I was very impressed. I'm easily impressed, but that was very impressive. It was quite an operation. I mean, they were going gangbusters, and those roads looked phenomenal. I've already heard great feedback from the work that happened last week from constituents. And, you know, it's, if there's anything we can do to do more of that, I know we're going to have a great presentation later on this evening, but that's something that I would hope that we would continue to do and help keep our roads up to shape. We also, I had a meeting with Dennis Keller, who's a local engineer in Tulare County and deals with, I believe, 68 special districts throughout our county. And we talked about various projects that we're looking at partnerships and trying to encourage working together and making sure that we are, that we're trying to move things forward to help some of our small communities on, really mainly, water and sewer issues. And that was kind of his specialty. And so he seemed very open to that, and we had a nice beginning discussion, so I'm hoping that we can further have that and move some of those along to continue to help out our disadvantaged communities. I think lastly, there are a couple more things. Last Wednesday, also Supervisor Chucklin and myself, we attended a press conference in support of S.B. 623, our board. At our last board meeting, we approved, taking a formal letter of support for that, and we, along with California Citrus Mutual, California Water, and various other environmental justice groups and agricultural groups, went out and we spoke about the need and how Tulare County and the San Joaquin Valley would really take advantage of that type of program that would, that would help address water quality in the most disadvantaged communities. Some of the things that were, that were talked about is it's anticipated that over 50% of the funding would come to the Fresno-Tulare and Kern County areas to do that. And this is, we're talking about a state-wide fund. So I anticipate about $150 million, so potentially $75 million plus would be coming to our region and Tulare County getting a good portion of that. So we definitely have skin in the game, but we'd be getting a lot more than what we would be putting in, and I think that's beneficial to many of our communities. And lastly, we had a meeting with, regarding energy storage and solar production for our county last week. I think that was very productive. We had with staff, and I look forward to seeing something in the near future as far as how we can help keep our costs down and make sure we can do additional things to help our departments do what they do best, and that's not necessarily paying Edison or my former company.
Do you have a pension?
That's why I like people to pay their bills, because I would like my pension, so continue to pay them.
All right, Supervisor Charlie.
Yes, kind of busy couple of weeks since our last meeting. I want to thank, here tonight, Dr. Timothy Durden and myself, he heads up our mental health program, met with Councilman Bob Link, the City of Issey, the city manager, and the Chief of Police, and just talked to, gave an overview of what the county mental health program, transitional housing, a lot of the stuff that we have, that we do that helps to intervene with the homeless situation. So I think we had a very good meeting, and I think they have a better understanding of what we do, and also talked about how we can work together on some other programming there. I attended the United Way Community Breakfast Celebration, got some great recognitions and also a great video of our chairman dancing. If anybody would like to see that, it'll be on YouTube tomorrow night. It's great video. Last week, I spoke to the women of the AAUW, American Association of University Women, their first meeting of the year, just gave a little synopsis of what we do with the county, at the county, and some of the things, the programs and all that, so that was a nice. They had their budget, I just happened to have our recommended budget with me that day, and they had, were doing their budget, which was one sheet of paper, and I compared it to our, don't have it, but our book, so there was quite a little comparison there. Also, last Saturday night, I once again emcee the Issey Teen Idol Contest. If you never attended this, we have some incredible youth in our community, and it's always a great event to see the talent that we have and to highlight some of these young people in our community who are doing positive things.
What did Supervisor Crocker do for his act?
He didn't, he wasn't there. It was Issey Teen Idol, not Strap 14 Idol.
Yeah, but I did the pirate in person.
And lastly, if you happen to drive by the courthouse, you'll notice that all the old newsstands that were pretty tacky with papers and everything hanging out of them have been replaced. At least, there's one, there will be another going up. The City of Issey, the downtown Isseyans have the old green antique-looking newsstands that they got rid of a couple and donated them to us, and one of them now stands in front of the courthouse, and I think it's quite an improvement to that facility. We're looking at facility improvements, and I think aesthetics plays a big part in that. So thank you to the downtown Isseyans for that, and John and his crew for pulling those out. And lastly, I think as a gift to the City of Woodlake, we should send them a bottle of W D 40 for this charity.
Well, yeah, I thought you were going to mention Supervisor Chucklin, speaking of aesthetics and improving the image of things. I know Capital Projects is working with the Tulare County Peace Officer Memorial, and they are really doing a fantastic job to make that a very special place for loved ones in this community to remember the fallen peace officers in our county, in the county's history. So that is under construction currently, and they've torn everything up, but I really do look forward to seeing the finished product, and I know that that will be a very, very well-done tribute to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for. And Supervisor Chucklin also mentioned to me that residents who are interested in supporting this cause can purchase bricks to have those be used to help fund the project and also contribute and memorialize your feelings for those who've paid the ultimate sacrifice for our county. Quick recap, 9/11 blood drive was yesterday in Tulare. That is the Central California Blood Bank's single largest event that they have over the course of the year. They depend upon what Tulare does so heavily, and they do a wonderful job in Tulare. The whole community comes together, various service clubs do breakfast, lunch, and I believe even dinner, and help collect blood to help give the gift of life. And I appreciate all the constituents in District 2 and really county-wise that come together to help donate blood at this event, to make it special and to give the gift of life. Tomorrow, 9:00, it's Tulare, kicks off the county's only fair. Looking down there, Mr. Ennis, who represents the board. Tulare County's only fair, the county fair, and that's in Tulare, and it begins with a fair parade. I know that the chief is graciously going to be driving around, hopefully he didn't get that piece of dust out of his eye, and he's still driving the fire truck tomorrow and chauffeur the supervisors in the parade. They always do a great job there, and the community always shows up to support the parade and support the fair. It's a great event and wonderful to see all the various showcase pieces throughout the county. One of those focuses that they're going to really hit on this year is related to veterans. They're actually going to be, the Tulare Rotary donated a, I think it's a 70-foot tall flagpole. The fairground does not have a flagpole, and this, there will be a new flagpole there and a flag donated by the Rotary, and that is going to be a tribute to veterans. And they will also be unveiling a veteran's quilt honoring all of the veterans in the Tulare area for their service in wars of the past. We are blessed to have so many American heroes in our community of Tulare. And I also want to mention, too, that the Board of Retirement will be meeting tomorrow at 8:30, and will be setting the assumed rate of return and some other actuarial assumptions, which is why it is very important for me to be there, and I will not be able to be in the parade tomorrow, so I will be missing my colleagues, but I'm sure they'll represent the board well. And the weather is actually going to be nice this year, too. And Thursday, there is a meeting of the Strategic Finance Committee at 9:00 at the Board of Supervisors' chambers. Look forward to that meeting and hopefully honing in on some recommendations as to what we can do specifically facing the, I would say, the number-one issue that is confronting the county at this time, that is unfunded retirement liability in the future, we'll be very proactive with that. I look forward to the outcome of that discussion, and I appreciate all of staff's hard work to give the board information to me. So that concludes board supervisor's matters, and we are going to now move on to item number three on our agenda, which is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comments can and will be limited to 30 minutes. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in their public comment? Please leave your name and address for the record, home address.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO and County Council, Jason Britt, HHSA Director. I just want to take a few moments to introduce Karen Elliott. Karen is our new Public Health Director for the agency, and she has been with the agency for over 17 years and has been the Deputy Director of that branch for about the last 10 years, and so we're happy to have her aboard, and I just wanted to give you guys a face with the name, and you'll be seeing much more of her, so thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you for that introduction. Are there any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll put a public comment period and bring it back to our agenda. We will now take up the consent calendar. Items 4 through 30, I do have a request to remove item number 9 from the consent calendar. Are there any additional corrections or comments or items to be pulled? Supervisor Crocker.
I'd like to pull item 16.
Okay, item 16 pulled. For separate consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
I just like staff to highlight that. I think it's a good item.
Okay, great. Any initial items from members of the board or members of the public? Motion to approve the bell. Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, all those in favor, please, signature by saying aye. All opposed, the same. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to take up item 16. Supervisor Crocker.
It was a, it's a beefy item, so there's a lot of good information. I know some of it's a little repetitive to past discussions that we've had, but if you would just highlight some of it, I think it would be wild to hear.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Chairman Vanderpoel, members of the board, Mr. Spott and counsel, my name's Cindy Ortiz, Deputy Director for Child Welfare Services, and thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Crocker, to come forth and talk about what our system improvement plan actually is. And it's an opportunity that we have every five years to come together with Child Welfare Services in collaboration with probation and our inter-agency partners, community partners, our resource families, our staff, and most importantly, for me, we get to have the voice of our foster youth in this process. And we get to come together and talk about how we are going to strengthen services and support that we provide to our families and our children in multiple communities in our county. And essentially, over these next five years, what you have, what we've shared with you and you have in front of you is we're going to focus on permanency in 12 months for children in foster care, placement stability, which was a big one for us, timely response for our 10-day referrals, and monthly visits for youth in out-of-home care, and for those youth who are currently residing with their families but are on family maintenance and overseen by the court. Probation's also going to be focusing on permanency within 12 months for those probation youth in care, and then in 12 to 23 months as well, so two areas of focus. And over these next five years, this really gives us the opportunity to focus and work not only as an agency in terms of Child Welfare Division, but across HHSA and looking at how can we approach services and supports in a collaborative manner. So that's what we're going to be looking to. CDSS has already approved our system improvement plan, and that's why we're before you tonight is to get your support. Previously and earlier this year, you also supported us in having oversight and the ability to fund all of our prevention services in our county, and that happens through all of our Austin Family Resource Centers. We have multiple in our county. We're really fortunate, and Tulare County have multiple family resource centers, as well as family services and our Child Abuse Prevention Council. And this system improvement plan isn't any net county cost to us. It really is just how are we going to continue to strengthen and improve what we're already doing? So at this time, I'm open to any questions, if you have any.
Any questions or comments by board members, members of the public? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I need to approve. We have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Ennis, all those in favor, please, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to move on on our agenda to take up item number 31, a request from the Department of Services Agency to ratify and confirm all emergency evacuation orders and any orders, the same evacuation orders, as issued by the Director of Emergency Services or his successor. Come on, Jason, help me out. It's a long process.
Good morning. Good evening, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO and County Council. This is to, item before is to ratify and confirm all the emergency evacuation orders that have been issued during the time of the pier fire. I do want to note, before we go further in this agenda item, that there was, there is a request to add the rescinding evacuation orders for the Upper Rio Vista Drive and Cal Mountain in Springville dated September 6, 2017. And those are made available to you, and as well as the public. That was kind of left off at the time of publication and print, so you'll also be adding that to this, to this agenda item. So this is a matter where we normally come before you to ask you to ratify all emergency orders that occur during the emergency time, and at this time, I'd like to hand it off to Fire Chief Charlie Norman to give the board an update about the status of the pier fire.
Chief Norman?
Thank you. Good evening.
Somebody go over there?
Okay.
Laser pointer, please?
Thank you. Good evening. August 29 started off very, very poorly with the Tulare County Fire Department surrounding residents in this area. Driving up Camp Nelson, every time you drive up there, you're thinking, this, if we ever have a fire, man, I sure hope we don't have it here. And it stopped that day. We had that, this was the first night of the fire, about 2:00 AM. We had 100 acres upon initial arrival on both sides of the highway, so we had 100 to the south, 100 to the north, and overwhelming influence. We had our units, we had seven of our units, two task forces, and units from Cal Fire on a Forest Service fire, so the crews did a great job with initial attack. Next slide. Here's more of that, and the picture doesn't do this any justice, with the chameys and the chaperone in there, we had 60 to 70-foot flame lengths coming off of this. Very significant incident, hard to suppress. I heard, first battalion chief that was on scene, first thing I heard was an elevated voice, and this is one of the coolest people in the free world, so I really knew that we had some significant issues. Next slide, please. This is one of the structures that we lost. Out of 30,000 acres, and now we find ourselves at 60% containment, we had one structure loss, and that was in the Rogers camp areas. As you look through this with the chaperone and chameys, and some of your ladder fuels below the big trees, this house was basically undefendable. We had two task forces, two structure protection groups, and we were unable to stop this fire. The irony of that is it is one of our personnel's parents' house. It is men and their families since the 1930s. Well, let's not go here just yet. By the way, since things are going so well with this presentation. Is it the right time to ask for money?
I think that might have been for you.
Thank you, Candace.
You're the best, Candace. If we could go to that next slide.
Go ahead and go to the map. We'll go to the map at this point. Should be that one PDF at the top. How's everybody doing up there?
Hey, looking for this print.
At this point, we are 30,390 acres and 60% containment. All of our structure threats have been mitigated. We had mandatory evacuations for all the mountain communities, Alpine, Sequoia Crest, Mountainiere, Rogers, and Mountainiere is spelled A-I-R-E. That is not a fireman typing error. Doyle Springs, Wasatch, and this morning, we are getting out of unified command. We had a command structure, Forest Service Incident, Incident Management Team, that had Incident Commander from Tulare County Fire, Cal Fire, as well as the Forest Service Incident Management Team. Very good for making decisions regarding our own resources, very good for making decisions as you get these large-scale incidents, and normally, the Incident Commander will drive box around things. And when you get in there as local government and see the box, there's a lot of things that we value in that box that are probably going to be consumed, so very important to get in that process. As we go through this, we will start damage estimates tomorrow. We do have the one obvious structure, we're going to have some road damage up by Doyle Springs, and will help the community get back into the recovery mode. Once we get into recovery mode, we will probably set up a centralization of RMA dumpster in the Camp Nelson area to have people that have the spoiled food and some of the things. So after the fire, we're not going to go away. We did apply for FMAG reimbursement through the federal government, so through the FMAG process, this won't be borne by the county as large a percentage as what we thought it would be. I'm just talking until we get that map up.
Do you know how many personnel were on this fire?
At the height of the incident, we had 1,800 people, 1,800 firefighter personnel. Our department is about 123 paid staff and 200 extra firefighters. We had 68 personnel up there with 23 pieces of apparatus, and a large portion was in the command staff, as well as the overhead, branch directors, division group supervisors, and strike team leaders. So we only had, we not only had boots on the ground, we had people in overhead positions to make decisions for a good positive outcome of this fire. You look into what we have with the state of California, we are at a PL level 5, priority level, which is the worst. 5 is the worst, meaning nothing, no resources available. 1 means everything good. We go to PL 1 in the wintertime, unless it's flooding. But with that being said, with all these incidents in all these communities that draw down, we were able to not only get through the master mutual aid system, we had engines from Woodlake, which Woodlake is a small fire district. Anthony Chief Perez was able to offer up an engine. City of Tulare, the City of Issey, the City of Porterville, Kings County, Cal Fire, and a lot of that are because of the personnel relationships, the relationships we have with the Tulare-Kings County Chiefs. People were able to offer things up, and it was early in the fire, so we didn't know where the reimbursements were coming from, so a lot of this was done through just master mutual aid. They knew they weren't going to get paid, but they offered up the resource anyway. The EOC operation, the EOC closed at 5:00 PM this evening to help us manage the incident and all the non-fire issues related to this. Very good representation, good collegiality and teamwork from RMA, from the Sheriff's Department, HHSA Finance. It was a very seamless operation. Let me take you a little bit into the fire. Right here, this is our point of origin, this is where it started, both sides of 190. If I had to do predictive behavior, I was thinking it was going to run up towards Wasatch, run up here towards Camp Nelson. It went everywhere. And once we got into Sequoia Crest, Camp Nelson, we really had some problems in there. Night number four, it blew up in this area just south of Saigon. We had extended evacuations here. At that point, the temperatures were way up, we had a couple of hundred and three days, very, very low relative humidity, humidity, so we had some significant issues. Everything is buttoned up around here. Some of these mid-slope communities, Sequoia Crest, Alpine, I didn't know that we were going to be able to save them. We had some good air support. The problem that we had with master mutual aid system is there was very low availability of hand crews. All of the hand crews were being taken up north, being taken out on various incidents. We only had two strike teams of hand crews, so we were very, very much behind the curve. This area in here, Division Whiskey, Division Union, I know I have to talk through a little bit of fireman lingo. Down here, this is still creating concerns for us. We have some very heavy fuels, we have some heavy timbers on the northern part of the Indian Reservation. Once we get that through there and we have some more hand crews in there, we should be able to pick this up. Once it comes through here, we'll have some what we call lighter, flashier fuels where we should pick it up, and it'll keep it out of the structure protection, so the structure protection issue. Coming down here on Branch 5, down here, Division Whiskey on that southwest, that was concerned about day five. It was starting to go into Springville and the upper area of Springville. With this starting here, this burning all directions, I think Supervisor Chucklin was in the EOC when she sho- in the EOC when she saw, saw the predictive map. The predictive map showed it going here and over here. And the only thing that changed that was the weather. We got some cooler weather, uh, the relative humidity went up and we were able to catch it in this place. Very, very extensive fire. I think, uh, Chief McGlaughlin, Chief Marcus and I have probably had thirty hours of collective sleep in the last two weeks. Um, but that's okay. Uh, the job's done. One structure burned, uh, minimal injuries, no serious injuries at all. It was a very, very positive outcome for our incident. And it seems like since about June third, when we had the Dinalley Fire and we had the flooding incident and we had the Schaefer Fire, this has been, I'm really, really looking forward to November. Um, that's all I have. Great operation, a lot of successes, um, very good opportunity the way Master Mutual Aid works in Tulare County, the state of California. We have stakeholders, other departments, other cities, counties that really helped us out on this and I'm very appreciative of that. Appreciate all your support, CAO and the Board, and would answer any questions you might have on this incident.
Any questions or comments by Supervisor? Charlie, do you have any thoughts about the Black Mountain Grove in terms of how it might survive this fire?
It's, uh, we have a lot of fire coming in there. We do have some hand crews and some BLM and Forest Service crews. My hope is that with the weather dropping, uh, with the temperatures dropping, we should be able and be able to get some work. If that spot's over, that grove, the Black Mountain Grove, what Supervisor Worthing was talking about, right in here, we'll be able to pick that up there. But there are crews working in there to try and mitigate some of that. On another subject, the tree mortality program. Um, we've got much less tree mortality in the area. Had it come up here through the Western Divide Highway, we pretty much would have mitigated everything. Um, the Cedar Fire, we saw some tree mortality behavior last year and some crowning and some significant fire runs, but, uh, nothing like what we saw here with, uh, the lighter fuels that were able to get it up into the crown fuel fires. So very much, uh, very more, uh, much more risky fire behavior than what we had on the Cedar Incident.
Any other questions?
Good job, Charlie. Thanks for all of your men.
Thank you. And women.
Yes. And, uh, just, you know, being at the EOC and I don't think there's a department that that's not touched when something like this happens. Everybody is a call to arms and is there looking and, you know, you haven't had much sleep. So if you don't feel like driving tomorrow in the parade, don't worry about it.
Thank you Supervisor Shucklin.
Just don't let Mike Ennis drive because, uh, you might have something happen to, uh, Engine One.
I think Supervisor Ennis would be fine driving that rig.
Hey, I, I just wanted to thank you Chief, uh, and congratulate, uh, you. But really, I think what's important you touched on, uh, is the fact that all of our communities stepped up and offered up assistance, uh, so that we could really contain the impacts of this fire. And I think that, uh, the collegiality and the relationship that you have built and that the County Fire Department has with our sister and brother agencies here in Tulare County and in the valley really, um, really came to, to our aid and helped in this situation. And, uh, there's a lot to be thanked, uh, up and down this area for, uh, the great relationships and the efforts that helped to keep this to, uh, really a relatively minor, uh, incident when it could have been a heck of a lot worse.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a request to, uh, ratify and confirm, uh, the chairman entertained and rescinded for those that are involved. A motion by Supervisor Shucklin, a second by Supervisor Crowder. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed the same. Motion passed unanimously. We are now going to move on to item number thirty-two, which is a request to receive a presentation from the Resource Management Agency regarding the twenty seventeen road maintenance and rehabilitation strategy. It's a little late in twenty seventeen to begin this presentation.
Fiscally, you're twenty seventeen. Yes. Uh, good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Chairman, CAO, County Council, Reed Shankey with the Resource Management Agency. Um, I want to take a bit of time this evening to have a discussion about the condition of the roads, what our strategies are for maintaining the roads, and then a bit of a silver lining with some of the, uh, actual new funding that we have associated with roads. So let's see if this works here. Perfect. Um, there's really four main topics I'd like to go over with you tonight. Um, first is, uh, I'd like to touch on our maintenance strategy, how we most effectively use the money for our road maintenance. Um, second is, uh, an overview of our road network and the funding associated with paying for the maintenance and operations of it. Third is some of the maintenance treatments, some of the tools in our toolbox to maintain the roadway. And then fourth is the action item, which is we need to identify projects, um, that we will be performing using the new Senate Bill One, uh, the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act money. So on October sixteenth, we need to submit or before then, we need to submit to the California Transportation Commis- Commission, a list of the roads that we'll be doing using that new money. Um, so first off, just a bit of a teaser on our road maintenance strategy. Um, how do we pick the roads that we're going to maintain? There's a huge road network and, uh, definitely not enough money to cover everything. So how do we prioritize? How do we select the roads that we're going to work on? And it's really a three-legged approach. It's, um, in, I guess, no particular order, it's analytics. Um, you've heard about our pavement management system. This is the, um, quantitative numbers where we go out and inspect the roads and identify them. And, um, our software program spits out a, uh, kind of a recommended solution to the road maintenance. Um, it takes into account traffic volume, safety data, um, and then also kind of the qualitative analysis of our, the people on the field, the district superintendents and the RMA engineers. Um, this one, the result is treatments and locations. So that's what that really spits out. The second aspect is plans and public input. This is our, um, more qualitative analysis. This is the project selection based on community needs. It's, uh, close coordination with the different plans, the updates. So we're doing community plan updates, complete streets plans, safer out to school plans and so forth. Um, economic development considerations, and then the qualitative analysis from the road users. These are the people who call us up day to day and make requests, say, hey, I need this road worked, looked at, let's see what we can do about that. So that one really more locates, um, or identifies locations, not so much the solution, the particular solutions. Um, and then the third aspect is a rapid response. And this is, we know we're going to miss something, so we've set aside a portion of the budget to respond throughout the year for these ad needed responses. Um, getting into what is our road network, I guess Tulare County Roads one oh one. Um, you're familiar with this, we're a very large road network, a little over three thousand miles. The table here kind of shows a comparison of the top ten road networks in the state. We're number seven and that includes Caltrans and the Forest Service city of LA. So you can see we've got a lot of road miles to maintain. Um, most of those are rural roads, but we do have about two hundred and forty miles of, um, urban roadway, so within the communities. So what is the condition of the roads? One of the simplest ways to identify a, a condition of the roadway or look at the pavement conditions is a PCI, Pavement Condition Index. And this is basically a score of zero to a hundred, a hundred is excellent and zero is a completely failed roadway. We're currently at a sixty-six PCI. The state average was right about there at sixty-five and California County's average is about sixty-one and a half. So we're a little bit better than average, but, um, that's really nothing to brag about because sixty-six is kind of in that fair to, uh, moderate range, um, of PCIs. The lower portion of the table here, this, uh, the slide, shows what it would take to raise our PCI, maintain our PCI, or if we had zero funding based on this. So thirteen million dollars this year in budget for pavement maintenance. Um, if we maintain that over ten years, um, the PCI would reduce to fifty-eight. So that takes us pretty much from the fair range to the poor range. Um, if we wanted to go to what's generally considered a best management practice PCI of seventy-five, we're looking at sixty-six million dollars a year over ten years. So that's quite a bit of money. Um, another way to look at that is by this chart here. So it's basically on the, the horizontal, or the vertical axis, it's annual pavement maintenance, um, expenditure. This would be a projected over ten years and what that resulting PCI would look like. So you can see it's kind of diminishing returns. Um, no way we're going to expect two hundred and fifty million dollars every year for ten years to get up into the ninety range, but that's kind of the, the trend of what it would look like there. Getting into a little bit more detail, um, within the different road district or different supervisor districts, this is a map showing what the pavement conditions are on particular roadways. So green is good, yellow is moderate and red is generally bad here. Um, that's District One, District Two. As we look at these, another way to identify or that we, um, identify the PCIs is we go out and we inspect fifty percent of the roads every year. So we're doing, over a two-year period, we're looking at all the roads.
Why, why is there so much red in District Two?
Exactly.
Supervisors are taking care of things.
So District Two is the, um, largest, uh, within supervisor districts, maintain miles within the roadway. Um, part of it is because of the, uh, subsurface soil conditions out there, it's just harder to maintain the roads in that area. Uh, District Three primarily is the city of Isseyah. So we only maintain, uh, a much smaller roadway network. Um, point here, Avenue two eighty Caldwell Avenue between ninety-nine and the county line to the west. Um, we've got an overlay project going on there. So while that's going to be green within the next, uh, month or so, that's currently ongoing project. Um, District Four here, you can see this one. And again, these are kind of snapshots. It's a brief analysis, the inspector goes out, looks at the roadway surface condition and there's a, a metric and they're actually certified statewide to compare this. So it's consistent across all different agencies and jurisdictions. Uh, District Five here. Um, so now as we get into transportation funding, um, the way I really look at this is where the revenue comes from, and there's three main categories in my mind. Um, the first on the left side, service revenues and reserves, the light blue is our reserves. That's our fund balance carried over from prior years. Um, the other two categories, this year they happen to be roughly equal between discretionary revenue, that's in my mind, the money that we have the discretion to spend where we need it, be it, um, on road maintenance, we can spend it for improvements. Um, we, we get to choose where that money goes to. Um, and then the third category is reimbursable projects. And think of these kind of as grant specific projects that are either been applied for and competitively selected and awarded, or through, um, Measure R, through the regional project programs. These are monies for generally improvements and it's, uh, associated with a specific project. This breaks it down a little bit further, shows you kind of the percentages between local, state and federal, where the money comes from. Um, on this slide, probably a couple of things to point out. Um, the Measure R local money is about, uh, four million dollars this year. That's discretionary, we can use that for general road maintenance as we see fit. Um, in red is the big silver lining to this whole conversation. Um, it's the SB one money. This year we're looking at about four and a half million dollars. And I've got another slide, kind of getting into that in a bit more detail. So that's five percent of our discretionary or our overall road budget, which is a big, big, uh, benefit to us this year. Um, and then in the project specific reimbursable funds, you can see we get nineteen point seven million dollars this year. That's a real big number for a particularly year. Um, we're doing the Avenue two eighty widening and the Avenue four sixteen widening project. So that number's higher than we would have seen in prior years and it'll be smaller when those projects are done. Um, so that's kind of the breakdown of the funding there. Always want to take an opportunity to, uh, say how much Measure R has helped the roadway network. Um, there's three general pots of money that we get, uh, to apply to roadways from Measure R. It's local programs, regional projects and transit bike and ped projects. Uh, local programs is about thirty-five percent of the overall Measure R revenue. That's then, uh, distributed out to the various member agencies based on the population, maintain mileage, daily vehicle miles, uh, math there. We typically get between four and five million dollars annually of that local program money. And that's discretionary, we can use that on improvements such as the complete streets, school safety improvements, sidewalks, that sort of thing. Or, um, typically a lot of it is used for maintenance. So that's everything from potholes to blade patching and overlays. The other two are the reimbursable types of pots of money. Um, that's the Road eighty and one oh eight, which is done, Avenue four sixteen and two eighty, which are currently undergoing. So those are big ticket improvements, um, that we would see throughout the county. And then transit bike and ped, that's fourteen percent and again, distributed throughout the member agencies. That can go towards, we get some money on transit expansion, um, also goes towards bike paths and other types of improvements there. Um, the other big pot of money that's worth talking about is transportation gas tax funny, uh, gas tax money. Uh, the gas tax distribution calculation is pretty complicated, but the way it generally works out, it's eighty percent based on registered vehicles, which is really just a number of, um, uh, registered, uh, citizens within the county or city. And then it's twenty percent based on number of maintain miles. So in that case, it counts only, uh, unincorporated county, uh, maintain mileage. So there's the breakdown for the different districts on what that looks like as far as, um, registered vehicles and maintain miles per district. Um, what that realistically works out or how it affects us is because it's primary, gas tax is primarily distributed based off population, um, and we have a large number of maintain mileage and a low population, we end up with a fairly low, uh, dollar per mile of gas tax. You can see some comparisons on that far right column there. We're at about thirty-five hundred dollars a year per gas tax per mile. And you see LA County directly above it is well over ten times that amount. So that's one of our big challenges is how we deal with, um, relatively low amounts of funding and relatively high amounts of roadway. Within the different districts, um, again, this is another way showing population and registered vehicles, maintain mileage. But the big one I think to point out on this table is the average maintenance expenditure we've had in the, the different districts over the past three years. So between Districts one, four, five and two, it's typically about two million dollars. We're doing a fair bit more than that this year and I'll get into that in a second. And then District Three is because it is a smaller district with maintain mileage, it's a lower number. This is probably my favorite slide in the presentation because it is really the good news slide. Not going to comment on whether or not taxes are good or bad, but for us, we're definitely seeing a benefit there. Um, the dark gray bars are what the prior HUDA or gas tax money would, or was. And then the lighter is the projected number of where that would have gone. And you can see the trend is downward and through twenty, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. We had started to see a hit there already. Uh, it's pretty much attributed to, uh, higher efficiency vehicles, but it's also not an inflation indexed, uh, tax. So as our buying power decreases as well there. The, the big news is the orange bars, this is the new gas tax. This year we're looking at about four and a half million dollars of SB one money. It's going to probably double in the next year and then more than double in the years following that. So that takes us up to projected nearly thirty million dollars of gas tax and by twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, that's really big news for us. It's, it's more than tripling where we've been with gas tax. So we'll be able to do a lot more with that money. Um, that being said, we need to be good stewards of the money and demonstrate proper use, um, both through getting the money out, we're not going to pocket this. Um, and this SB one money is, uh, directly, um, required to be spent on road maintenance. So if you've got a PCI below, I believe it's in the eighty range, so we're nothing close to that, um, we're required to spend that on maintenance of the roadway each year. Um, here's our overall budget picture. Uh, the revenue this year, we're looking at about, uh, almost ninety-two million dollars. You can see the different revenue sources, which were from those prior slides. And this is kind of where the roads revenue breaks up. Um, this is based off our proposed seventeen eighteen budget, which you'll be looking at next week, I understand. So the main thing here, I think, to look at is where the, the different pots of money go and how it ends up being towards pavement management. That's really what I'm focusing on today. So as you can see, the splits out, the reimbursable work, thirty-three point eight million, that's for kind of the improvements and whatnot type projects. Um, we have improvements in special projects in that third row there. Tree mortality is one that we're starting to see more impact on as we clear the roadway for those, uh, tree mortality affected areas. ADA upgrades, um, to reduce our liability for ADA lawsuits, we've developed, uh, an ADA improvement or transition plan. And that identified, um, a significantly high number of ADA improvements. These are curb ramps and sidewalks throughout the county that don't meet current standards. So we've got a program over the next ten years to start chipping away at that. And that's kind of our, uh, indemnification, I guess, in a way to protect us from ADA lawsuits. As long as we're following the, the rules associated with that and keep chipping away at it, then we're somewhat protected. But getting into the road system maintenance work, about twenty million dollars this year. Um, that goes towards pavement management, but then also just our general operations of roadway. So this is clearing drainage culverts, uh, bridges and guardrails that get knocked over throughout the year, shoulders, tree trimming, that sort of thing. So really it works out to about sixteen million dollars associated with just pavement maintenance. So this is asphalt repairs. And that's broken down into contracted overlays, that's the out to bid work, our force account, AB seven twenty overlays, which is the work that we can do within the requirements of Assembly Bill seven twenty. Um, that's about two million dollars this year. And then our non-AB seven twenty force account work. So that's about seven point seven million. And that's where I think we really get a good bang for our buck. That's our blade patches, our potholes, our chip seal program, that's our county crews work primarily there. Within that $16 million, we try to set a pavement allocation, or a target allocation, about 45, 45 communities and rural roads, and then 10% is that rapid response that I was talking about earlier. From the prior slide, the reimbursable work, these are kind of our reimbursable projects, so it's the improvements, the 280, the Avenue 416 project, and then also the work that the roads department does for other county agencies, for example, we do some mechanic services for fire and transit and solid waste, so that's a reimbursable cost, or reimbursable activity for the roads department. So that's kind of the roads 101 there, as we see we've got a tremendous need and limited amount of funding to do what we would like to do, and I think we all recognize that we're not going to do everything and make everybody happy, so going over some of the constraints and challenges, and then getting into the strategy of how we're going to best utilize the funding and meet the needs of the communities and the residents of the county. Couple of them listed here, I won't go through all of them, but AB-720 is worth mentioning, that's a state law that basically limits the amount of work that county forces can do and requires it to go out to bid, so there's some limitations with that, associated with that. And then we've also seen some new demands on the roads budget, I was mentioning the ADA implementation, tree mortality, complete streets is a new big thing, so it's not just pave the road, but it's also provide sidewalks, bike facilities, those things, and while needed, they also drive up the costs of the maintenance or of the roadway network. But some of the opportunities, SB1, obviously, that's a big one, that's an inflation-protected revenue source, and you've seen it's going to grow pretty considerably. Previous years, we haven't utilized all of our AB-720 capacity, so we've developed a little bit better accounting processes and forecasting processes to be able to use all of the allowable amount and do as much work with county forces as we can. And an expansion of the activities by force account, we typically, in the past, we've been an asphalt department, I guess, and this year, with the new budget, we're looking at obtaining some equipment to do sidewalks, obtain the crews to be able to pour concrete and do that, so we're expanding a little bit in what our crews are able to do. So some of the opportunities. So one of the strategies, like I say, we're not going to be able to get up to that best management practice PCI, so there's some non-technical aspects of how we can improve the, I guess, the visibility of the roads throughout the county, and one of these is increasing public involvement. We need to improve our outreach and our responsiveness to the residents, we need to be better about educating them on what some of the demands of the roadway are and what some of our limitations are. So you can see here a list of items that we're looking at for this year to really improve, to be able to get our name out, get out to the residents, and be able to be more responsive to them. Effective use of the funds is probably the most critical item in the strategy here, and some of the items are some of the ways in which we're going to be able to do that, increasing force account activities, touched on that already a bit, but one of the other items is we're augmenting staffing by two to three people per road district. Typical road crew is about eight people, and we, at this stage, have about 13 or 14 crews per road district, so if we can add two or three per road district, that allows us basically to go two full crews per district and almost double our efficiency, so with that small outlay or investment on the staffing side, we're thinking we can really see some increases on the efficiencies there. Increased miles of county chip seal, overlay, and blade patches, these are the non-AB-720 projects, and this is, like I say, where we really get our bang for the buck, the money that, or the work that we can do with county forces goes a long way. Low-cost and high-impact improvements, these are improvements in areas where you get a bigger bang for your buck, so it's in front of schools, it's utilizing our farm-to-market mapping and identifying the routes where you get higher traffic, for truck traffic, for commodity movements, that sort of thing, so it's get as big a bang for the buck as we can, and I mentioned the concrete crew for the ADA and sidewalk maintenance. And then maximizing leveraging opportunities, we really want to expand improvement projects, so on the federal and state side, there's a lot more money for improvements, these are the opportunities where you can say, look, we built a bridge, or we expanded the roadway, there's not a lot of opportunity for just the flat maintenance work, prior to SB1 at least. So we're looking, every time we see an improvement project opportunity, we want to get as much maintenance work out of that as possible. Another leveraging opportunity is coordination of project development with other stakeholders and funding opportunities. So an example of this is we've got a waterline project in East Porterville that you're all familiar with, we managed to work with the state Department of Water Resources, and as that, as part of that project, they're doing probably a quarter million dollars worth of road improvements in that area, because they went in and entrenched through it and left the roads looking pretty poor, so they're going to come back and improve the roads, so that's just a way that, at no cost to the county, we're getting some road improvements out of them. And then utilize the discretionary funds to match outside funding, I think we've been pretty successful doing this, we get the federal money and we match it with local money. Increased responsiveness, I mentioned the rapid response activities, so we make crews and budget available for as-needed repairs throughout the year. We don't have the crystal ball, so we don't know exactly where the needs are going to come, we try to predict as well as we can, but this is an opportunity or a way in which we can respond most quickly. And then streamline and improve the administrative process, we're working on tools in our website, pothole requests, better information, and then also a way to get feedback back to the people who are requesting the maintenance repairs. Talking about our maintenance selection criteria, really, how do we choose which roads we do, talked about it at the beginning of the presentation, but it's really that three-legged approach, it's the analytics, it's the plans and public input, and then it's the rapid response is kind of the fallback, so we've got our pavement management system, our field inspections, that's our analytics, the plans and public input, that's the outreach we do to the communities. As part of the community plan updates, we've been meeting multiple times with most, if not all, of the communities throughout the county, and one of their primary concerns or items that they like to talk about the most is the condition of the roads, so that's something that we make sure we attend and pay attention to what those community needs are. Farm-to-market plan, again, is worth mentioning, that's where, with TCAG, we've identified the primary commodity goods movement routes, routes from dairies to milk processing plants, from farms to cold storage facilities, that sort of thing, and we've prioritized that in our road maintenance plans, we look at those and try to hit them as early as we can. So that's probably that there. What are the tools in our toolbox, maintenance treatment options, what can we do to maintain the roads, kind of from top to bottom there, top being the most expensive and bottom being the cheapest and probably the quickest to respond to? We've got overlays, blade patching, hand patching, and pothole patching. Overlays, we frequently contract that out, that's going to be our higher-ticket projects in the million-dollar range, and this is when the roads are actually being paved with about, typically from two tenths to maybe somewhere up to six inches of asphalt, depending on the condition of the roadways. These are maintenance, so the other option is obviously a reconstruction of the road. Reconstruction's probably more in the $500,000 per mile range. In comparison to actual maintenance, preventative maintenance is another solution or option, and this is more the comparison of changing the oil in your car versus having to replace the entire engine. So this chart is a way to show that small investments over time, and this is things like our chip seal program, we can maintain or extend the life of the asphalt so that we don't have to go back and replace it at a much higher cost. So we do the chip seal program, this year, we're doing about 70 miles of chip seal, that's a 50% increase over prior year. So that's kind of the information side of the presentation here, the part that I need to action on today is an identification of projects for this fiscal year that we will be spending SB1 money on, so like I said, we've got about $4.5 million of SB1 money, and we need to provide a list of projects to the CTC. This schedule shows what we've been working on this year to get to the list of projects, which I'll show you on the next slide. SB1 was fairly recently enacted, so our timeframe there is compressed, but next year, we'll be coming to you earlier on to help identify the roadways and then get that ahead of the budget, because one of the requirements of SB1 is that those roads be listed in the budget, so we're kind of doing this, I guess, in parallel this year and next year, it'll be in a little bit more of a linear tract. So after the full analysis, this is what we're proposing, the roadways for SB1 money for this year, you can see the list of roadways there, they're sprinkled throughout the county. It's about 12 miles of roadway, overlays and reconstruction, it's coming close to $4.7 million worth of maintenance work. Timeline for this would be designing it in the next few months, and then going out to bid and constructing in the spring and summer of next year, so that fits well with the SB1 timeline, and it's, I think, a really good opportunity to distribute the funds throughout the county and show the residents that we're making good use of their gas taxes. Further, a little bit more detail in the projects, you can see we're breaking them up into two projects to go out to bid, they're primarily overlay and reconstruction projects, like I said, about 12 miles for about $4.7 million, and one of the CTC requirements is that we identify project location, useful life, estimated cost, and some of the details that are in this table here. So with that, I'm certainly open to any questions, but I want to thank you all for your direction, your support in maintaining the roadways here, both the board and the CAO has absolutely been helpful in moving us forward, and I hope we're heading in the right direction, so.
Comments or questions for the supervisor about some project stuff, I think it's never been heard in a very good way.
I always sort of comment about the people, the big grateful opportunity that you're making, and I believe the cows in District Two would be very happy to see you. I just want to thank Reed for being agreeable with all of us, and being responsive to some of the things that I know, I was aware of, that in fact, living there and being aware of the circumstances that I can share with people. We do see a lot of consolidation of trucking situation, or packing houses are much more large operations running, instead of being sealed, these days, they run year-round and having a major impact on our roads, and I look at the projects you've identified in District Four, Three to Four, we've done a tremendous amount of overlay work, and this is a nice opportunity to kind of complete that, so I think it's very strategic plan, appreciate it, and I know that it's really exciting to see looking in the years ahead, where, you know, we're going to be able to move that needle in a positive way, and that's very important, so thanks for your good job.
Reed, very glad to see this blade patch, you know how I feel about that, but seeing these roads that have deteriorated so bad, and you take sections out and blade patch them, and then when you get done, you go back and put the chip seal on the whole thing, it's a good-looking road, so good job.
Thank you.
I just, you know, there's one slide that showed the fund balance for reserves, and, you know, in spite of the fact that SB1 is not up to its, to its full allotment that we're anticipating in two to three years, I would be interested in seeing us utilize some of those reserves to try and speed that up, because, you know, we've also looked at one of the more recent slides that talked about, you know, preventative maintenance, and if we can do more preventative maintenance on some of the roads before it gets to a point, knowing that it wouldn't necessarily be long-term, but if we use some reserves just until SB1 got to its full, or at least to a higher threshold of what it's funding, I think that maybe we can get a little more, longer lifeline out of some of our roads now, because I know, I'm sure we all get plenty of complaints about roads, even though you guys are doing a phenomenal job, it's just the nature of the beast having 3,000-plus miles of it, so thank you again for taking me out last week, it was very good, and I appreciate this presentation.
Certainly, I know the crews enjoyed seeing you out there, so thanks for coming.
Supervisors, can we get a little?
Oh, no.
I just wanted to say that I think it's a great, great plan, but the $4.5 million that we're going to be getting from SB1, and that's what we're specifically looking for correction regarding, that doesn't mean that that's the only money that's being spent on roads, we still are going to have our Measure R allocation, we're going to have the other monies from various sources that we have been using year in, year out, this is just specifically related to SB1. I think that the three-pronged approach is a very important way to go, there are the analytics aspects, and you do have to respond to the public, I think the public involvement is very important, spreading some time with town councils and various community organizations up and down the county is a good way to get information, and earlier this year, you and I and Johnny Wong and a couple other crew members were able to go out and just, on the hottest day, I think, of the year, it was 109 or 110, stand in front of a dairy and talk about roads in Joaquina, and, you know, that went a long ways, those guys were very, very happy, and I've had numerous other constituents that have heard about that meeting and say that they want a meeting in front of their dairy.
Happy to do so.
That's a, that's a good way to go, it's great for frequent users of the roads to see you out there and see county road personnel out there, listening to their concerns, because you're right, this is the public taxpayer dollar that's going to work for them to help make their roads safer, and I think if we tell the story out there about how much money is truly needed to bring our roads to, I guess, a target level, it's almost insurmountable, I mean, $660 million is a lot of money, but, you know, when you look at the increase in allocation that we expect by late 2020s, you know, getting up to that $30 million level, I think that we can really make some debts, and my supervisor Crocker said, doing some of the preventative maintenance is going to really pay off over the long term, so I agree with the way that you've laid out this plan, but I encourage you to make sure that we use some of our other funding that we have discretion over to continue to allow for adequate response to public input, as you suggested already.
Certainly.
With that, the chair will entertain the motion, the formal directions to staff where we don't need to give a formal motion, if the direction was given is sufficient.
We do need a formal motion.
Yeah. I would move a rule, that matter, but I also make sure with what my colleague Kyler said, that I think the idea of using more of our reserves now has sort of a way of catapulting us ahead, moving forward, and the other thing about that is that we're going to see, as more counties have more money, there's going to be more competition with labor and material, so now probably a really good time to try to take advantage of that.
Road reserves, not general.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Worley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, all those in favor for the signature by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
We're now going to move on to Item 33, which is a request from Human Resources and Development and Target to approve the following recommendations.
Good evening, supervisors, Item 33 is a request, several requests concerning our health insurance renewals and rates for our 2018 plan year, and when I say 2018 plan year, that's beginning January 1 of 2018. So the item before you specifically request renewing the Anthem Blue Cross PPO plan offerings that were being provided through the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority with a 3.3% increase in our rates this year, renewing our Kaiser Permanente plan rates with no increase for the $0 and $1,000 deductible plans, and for the Senior Advantage Plan as well, and we are also asking maintaining this $10 risk adjustment fee per employee per month for all Kaiser plans that the SJBIA had proposed last year, and we opted to, into that fee. Approved participation in the Delta Dental PPO Plan with no increase, and the Delta Care HMO Plan with a 5.37% increase in plan rates, and the Delta HMO Plan is the plan where if you go to a dentistry that's kind of on, I want to say, the corner shopping center, usually those are provided at different rates, and it's through, they call those the dental care HMOs, versus going to your dentist that might have a longstanding practice, they usually go through the PPO plans. Approved participation in the Vision Service Plan through the SJBIA with an increase of 2%. 2% in our rates for next year, and approved renewal of our Anthem Blue Cross Employee Assistance Program with no increase in rates for next year. The proposed rates have been reviewed through the SJBIA and the SJBIA consultant, and also through the Tulare County Health Plan Advisory Group, which consists of members of our unions as well as management and Unrep employees. And that process included use of our county consultant, Alliant Benefit Services. So we have gone through those processes of asking for input, looking at the rates, and before you are the various recommendations. I, to give you kind of some perspective in rates in terms of comparisons with other agencies, for the Covered California ACA Plan, this year, they're experiencing a 12.6% increase. And while many on that plan, it will be subsidized, those that have no subsidy will be experiencing a 12% increase. TCCA, our probation group, which is outside of our plan, and they are on the Kenan Pace Program, are going to have a double-digit increase this year for their PPO of at least 10%. The City of Visalia increased this year for their PPO is 7.3%. Through our CSAC EIA Program, the County of Merced is getting their pooled rate, and that's a 3.6% increase. So our 3.3 is, I think, very, is a very good rate overall on our increases. The only one that is having a decrease this year that we have looked at was Calpers, and they are having a 2% decrease in the rates. However, in the last two years, they had a 19% increase. So they've seen, in the last two years previous to that, so they have seen a huge swing there. So we feel pretty good about the 3.3%. This will, we're estimating the cost this year to the county for the portion of the employee's minimum benefit amount that we pay will increase by approximately $524,382. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the Board members of the public?
And I would like to, though, I would like to note that we provided, I provided a revised agenda item because there was a change of one cent on our actual minimum benefit amount, and there was some decreases over the previous information we got from the SJBIA consultant, which decreased one to six cents per pay period.
Hey, Reed, can you matter?
It does.
And just, we've already had these discussions, but at the SJBIA, and I do think that 3.3% increase, as you have demonstrated, is reasonable, given the health insurance environment that we are in. And the premium increases are a direct result of claims. So if our employees continue to get healthier, we can expect stable increases or no increases and hopefully decreases into the future and encourages the continuance and expansion of wellness efforts that we have undertaken to come up to this point.
I would like to add that this year, we are going back, or we have gone back to a rating process through the SJBIA, where we are sharing fixed costs with the other four entities in the SJBIA, which is your administrative costs and other fees, but we were rated separately based upon our own experience.
And that makes a lot of sense. Supervisor Cropper, Ron, did, I know that overall, this is a lot better than other, than others are going to be experiencing this upcoming year, but did we do any research to see what the rates would have looked like or what our overall experience, not with any specificity, but if we would have gone out on our own, as far as what rates would have looked like, would they have been better or worse?
They were close to the 3.3%. The, we compared with the CSAC EIA Program, and I believe theirs was, like I said, 3.6 was their pooled rate. Had we gone into that program, we were looking at potentially a 2.5% increase over this previous year. So we did compare with the market, and the recommendation is to continue with the SJBIA. We hope to derive savings, even further savings this year than what we have projected on a new pharmacy benefit management firm that we will be using and implementing January 1st.
Okay. Does anyone have other comments?
I have a question, Ron. I think, I know we touched on a little bit when we met with my consultants about the county having a, you know, I know we're big on wellness activities and all, but having a type of a wellness clinic that our employees could work to for preventative care or whatnot.
Staff, we have met a staff with a local firm that provides clinic services, and we have been looking at that. Currently, the model, we looked at a model that the City of Visalia has used, and actually, they pay their regular insurance rates, and then they are funding also the clinic. They're getting no benefit directly to their rates through CSAC EIA from the clinic, although because many of their employees are having less time off of work by going to the clinics because they can get some basic pharmacy and flu shots and basic service needs, they're feeling that there are savings overall to the City of Visalia. Through CSAC, there's also another program that was being promoted of using a clinic model that Kings County and Santa Barbara Counties, I know, are also using that clinic. We could look further into that. One of the advantages for County Kings was that they had a facility. They had a medical facility that wasn't being used, that they were able to bring up a clinic very cheaply because they had the equipment. And now, I don't know the City of Visalia, what kind of investment they had to do because they did, they do have a facility here near downtown Visalia. So we have a lot of data and information. We met with, just in about the last 60 days, with a local firm, and if that's a desire that the Board would like us to pursue and look at, we'd be happy to look further into that.
There is a thing that I always heard too, where the employee, you know, employee satisfaction, besides, I know, I know the city, the employees were always very thankful and satisfied that the clinic was there and they had the opportunity to be there, so.
I bet they would be great, Nick, for a 3.3% increase this year instead of 7.7%.
I'm sure, I'm sure that would, yeah.
One of the, one of the issues with clinics that we, you know, we've thought about, and we need to look further at the impact, is that we are a county, and our workforce is spread out among a very large geographic area. So there could be potential for partnerships in other areas, such as Porterville or Denuva or Tulare, or even Visalia, although I believe they're using their firm, their facility at capacity. But that's also an issue because our employees would have to drive farther and take more time off work in order to use it, and would there be that benefit? And we just have not done that analysis at this time.
All right. Thank you.
The annex is available, Ray.
Right. The Chair will entertain the.
I think we're going to have to talk to County Council.
Second. Motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Chuggman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I'll oppose the same. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 34 on our agenda, we'll move on to, is a request from the County Administrative Office to approve a termination agreement by and among the County of Tulare and the Tulare County Public Facilities Corporation and the Bank of the New York Mellon Trust Company in aid relating to $41,375,000. County of Tulare, 98 certificate of participation. I'm waiting for you to speak up, Mike. It's a very long sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Or based upon that excellent introduction, I move that you approve your request of action.
More seriously, I don't.
Give you a moment because this is a really good success story for Tulare County. During the 1990s, three lease financings were procured and entered into by the county along with a number of other parties. The Tulare County Public Facilities Corporation and the Bank of Mellon, which served as trustee, and other parties. And the purpose of the financing, which is similar to a bond, but it's not a bond, the purpose of the financing was to construct new county facilities or renovate county facilities. And some of the facilities that were affected are Jubal Detention Facility, the Bob Wiley Detention Facility, the Adult Pretrial Facility, the Civic Center Courthouse, Visalia Health Clinic, the Wausau Building, and the Hillman Health Center in Tulare. The way the financing works is that the county owns the land and leases it back to a trustee, and then the county makes lease payments instead of bond payments, and it's not considered debt. And the general fund is utilized in order to pay that debt. So the matter before you, approximately $105 million, has been paid off. Therefore, this is the opportunity for the county to enter into termination proceedings of the agreement, and the land will return to full ownership to the County of Tulare. Specifically, in working with County Council, the matter was brought to the Tulare County Public Facilities Corporation's Board of Directors, and the termination agreement was approved on August 21, 2017. And so the matter is now before this Board of Supervisors to concur in that action, to basically signify that the proceedings are completed, the facilities have been built and renovated, and now it's time to call it a deal and free and clear title returned to the county. And thus, Mr. Chairman, Board members, I would request that you approve the agenda item, which is essentially to terminate the agreement and authorize the Chairman to sign three originals of that agreement.
Any questions or comments from Board members? Supervisor Cropper?
Mr. Spada, in the item that mentions that this will give the county flexibility, what kind of flexibility are we thinking about?
Flexibility in the general sense means that by removing this cloud on the title, the county could utilize this for future financing purposes. There are a number of items that we're considering right now to which these properties, once they're fuling free and clear of title, could then be used for further financings, be they certificates of participation or bond financing.
Any further questions or comments?
No, I move for approval.
Okay, we have an enthusiastic motion for approval by Supervisor Ennis. Second, and I did just want to comment that, I mean, this does reflect a tremendous amount of debt that's been paid off by the county, and does, pointed out here very quickly by Supervisor Cropper, we have not incurred additional debt, but we have incurred additional debt when it comes to our return. And so it's good for us to be looking at clearing up these because if we're looking at alternatives in order to deal with that, this is a preparatory to do. That's one of the longest seconds I've ever heard by Supervisor Worley. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Motion passes unanimously. We're now going to move on to item number 35, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to approve a termination agreement by and among the County of Tulare, the Tulare County Public Facilities Corporation, the City of Denuva, and the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company in aid.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a companion item to the earlier item in the sense that the financing, lease financing that we just talked about, was also utilized with regard to the construction of a new courthouse and a police station in the City of Denuva. Same fact here, the certificates from which funding was utilized have been paid off, and it's appropriate now in order to terminate the effective agreement and then transfer title to the City of Denuva of the courthouse property and the police station with the caveat that the court may still utilize the premises of the courthouse.
Okay. The Supervisor of Denuva, have any questions or comments?
No.
All right. I want to give you a chance to let your question be a little shorter this time around. We have a motion by the Supervisor from District 4, Supervisor Worley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose the same. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes our statement of approval. Supervisor, including the open session councils, we have no further needs to close session. Thanks for attending this evening, and Rob Alston.